Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, March 8th, 2023. It's a little after 6 o'clock. We're in City Council chambers, 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Now.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Mohler.
Present.
We're going to start off with an offering of prayer by Councilmember Tim Now. Follow that pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Let us pray. Lord, we are gathered this evening to ensure all residents and businesses in Hamilton, our city continues working diligently, mindful of everyone's safety and well-being as we plan strategically, looking to the future in our support, services, and responses. We thank you, or we thank our military and all first responders, public safety teams, for their commitment ensuring safety to those seeking their assistance. We are grateful to our residents and businesses for their continued contributions to our city's growth as we move purposely through these exciting times in Hamilton. Lord, in closing, we thank you for your countless blessings, praying these petitions in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have some special presentations this evening. The first one is the engineering projects update. Our Rich Engel, our Director of Engineering for the city of Hamilton.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. I get to go first tonight.
[laughing].
So, we're going to give you engineering updates. Continue to work on the traffic signal system project. The priority intersections continue to collect data. We did review recommended changes in signal timing today and have not made any just yet. We're still reviewing those. We actually found deficiencies last week where the cameras weren't aligned properly onto the lanes they were supposed to be monitoring. So, here's your task for this upcoming week. If you see any intersections, if the left turn signal comes up on a left turn lane and there's no car parked in that lane, please let us know. That was one of the major deficiencies we found. They started working on that issue today. They're starting at the west end out by the Meyer store and are working towards Hampshire Drive. So, if you notice that in any of your travels around the city, let us know because they're going to be checking everyone, but I want to be sure that they're still working properly before we move forward with that. Also, a couple of items of note. At the New London Road at B Street, as you're coming down the hill, there's a grassy median between the two east and westbound lanes. We're going to be reducing the size of that median and it will allow additional cars to be in the left-hand turn lane to go north on B Street, but we're also going to be removing the grassy strip and replacing it with concrete. This will be helpful to our public works crews, quite dangerous for them to go across a couple of lanes of traffic with their riding mowers just to mow that grassy strip and it's, there's no need for it. And we're going to be doing that also on the Pyramid Hill Boulevard side. On northbound at Columbia Bridge, we're going to be reducing the size of the median, allowing a little more cars to get into the left turn lane and also changing it from grass to concrete. And then also, engineering's been working with the planning department. We discovered the fact, well, we've known it for a long time, but we discovered the fact that the sidewalks on the south side of Eden Park Drive was never required to be put in by the developments that were built along there. So, we've been working with the property owners and going to be adding them to our concrete project for this year. They've agreed to sign waivers to add this to their assessment and we're going to add them to our assessment role as well. But they're signing the waivers, so we don't need council action for that. And that's the presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Rich.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
On Eden Park, is it going to be sidewalks on both sides or just one side?
Well, there's already sidewalks on the north side. It's just the south side was deficient, so we're adding those on the south side. We're also, there's a couple of sections missing, especially at Water Cove Drive. We're going to put a temporary path across Water Cove Drive because we're not sure what development may go in there someday, and we don't want to be constructing anything permanent and having it destroyed by construction activity. But we are working with the church on the north side. They're going to extend their sidewalk to that intersection as well.
Perfect. Thanks.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
Rich, when would you expect the New London Road median and the Columbia Bridge median to be downsized?
It'll be shortly. Our contractors are going to be starting that work here in the next month.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you again, Rich. Next special presentation is EV presentation by the Department of Infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. My name is Edwin Porter. I'm the Executive Director of Infrastructure for the city. I don't have a presentation for this. Just wanted to provide a verbal update. So, the first update is Agenda Item Number 20, and this is relating to an agreement with the Hamilton Community Foundation. So, the city made the determination to expand our EV charging station availability. Currently, we have four charging stations that are operable in the city, and each one of those charging stations has two separate ports, so eight separate ports. We'll be installing an additional three stations. One of those stations, we've determined to be installed at the Hamilton Community Foundation parking lot. They own the parking lot and that's at the Fitton Center. And so, we're entering to an agreement with the Fit, or with the Hamilton Community Foundation to lease the parking spaces at no cost to the city. So, this is just a lease agreement for those spaces, and it also allows us to expand in the future if we wanted to add additional EV charging at that location. And the reason we chose this location is our locations right now are currently kind of like a pilot program. So, we have two stations that are, that are in the city-owned parking lot just south of the county parking garage here. We have one charging station on 550 North Third Street parking lot, and then we have another charging station on Main Street between South B and South C Street. And so, each one of these charging stations, we're figuring out when they're utilized, how frequently they're utilized, et cetera. So, adding one at the Fitton Center is a great location and it's unique. And of course, the Fitton Center's right there. It has access to the bike trail, plus it has access to Main Street and High Street frequent businesses. So, so for your consideration tonight is Agenda Item Number 20, and we're bypassing caucus on this because our city employees will be doing the installation of this, but we want to do the installation prior to storm work or major construction maintenance activities because then our resources become limited doing those activities. Any questions on that? Nope. Okay. And then the next item to discuss is Agenda Item Number 18. So, this is a grant application to Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments. So, this is also for, it's a grant application for EV charging stations, but these are for DC fast charging stations. Now, these are different than what we have installed right now. We have Level 2 chargers that are installed right now and they're slower charging. A DC fast charging station can give you 400 to 500 miles of range per hour. So, these are, these are very fast charging stations and OKI was provided money through the federal carbon reduction program in order to support the installation of these. So, we've been working closely with the OKI to determine their grant requirements, and so there's a resolution tonight that will allow us to apply for grant funding and if received, to install these into, into the city. So, we're proposing to install these DC fast charging stations at two locations within the city, one of them at the existing CNG filling station along South Erie Boulevard near the city garage. So, essentially, we're proposing to install two stations there. And then the second location is at 141 Market Street, which is a city-owned parking lot between the Butler County Auditor's Building. So, both of these are close to high-volume traffic areas where someone can park and they can charge and it's close to amenities. But once again, these are fast charging stations, so you know, you might only charge for 10 to 15 minutes in one of these stations. This grant will require an 80%, 20% split with OKI. So, we're proposing a total, total application for $650,000. $520,000 of that would be grant funding and $130,000 of that would be matching funds. And some of those matching funds would be through city labor for installation as we would install these ourselves. And this request would authorize the city to apply for and if received, accept the grant funds, and it's bypassing the caucus agenda in order to submit the grant application by the deadline. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, I was at the presentation that the city did for OKI, and I had an opportunity to speak with them later, and they were extremely impressed with what Hamilton is doing and how out there you are in applying for grants. So, congratulations. Whether we get it or not, they're extremely impressed with what the city of Hamilton's doing and how prepared you are. So, thanks.
Well, thank you very much, and a lot of credit to Michael Gurr. So, he was unable to present tonight. He had a family obligation, but he's been leading the charge on, on the EV charging station. So, both of these items tonight, actually, Michael's been the point of contact for these. And so, he's done a great job on supporting this program, and you're right. You know, the comment was the city of Hamilton's really leading the way when it comes to EV charging infrastructure. And so, we're really proud of that and looking to expand it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin. Next presentation is South G Street Bridge, also by Edwin Porter and Alan Messer.
As Alan walks up, during the last city council meeting, we discussed the G Street Bridge potential, the grant application for potential removal, and Alan was unable to be here that night. And so, we wanted to come back with the presentation and add a little bit more information and turn it over to the subject matter expert, Alan, and for him to give the presentation.
Yeah. Good evening. My apologies for not being here when you had the vote. COVID finally caught up with me and I was quarantining that night, so. Just real quick, this is the, the aerial view of G Street. It was built in 1910. It loops around Put Off Street and kind of down the road as part of the ramp. The big question, as I understood it from the last meeting, was could it be converted to a pedestrian bridge? And the answer to that is no. For these reasons, in the caucus report, I mentioned the, the ratings of three and it needing to have a rating of no higher or no, at least four in one of these three categories. It had a rating of three in all three categories. One rating I didn't mention during the caucus phase was the sufficiency rating, which for this bridge is 14, and that's a score out of 100. And typically, to have a bridge rehabilitated or it needs to be at 50. So, that's where we are with this. Here's the pictures, just real briefly. The top picture, you can see cracks along the arches. The center picture there, there's something hanging down, looks like a wire that's actually reinforcing from the bridge itself that has popped out. And the bottom picture, there are some spots that you can see some light colored kind of at the top of the arch. That is actually daylight where the sidewalk, the cantilever's out over it, has lost so much concrete that you can literally see through it. So, looking then at could we remove this bridge and replace it with the pedestrian bridge, the answer there is yes. There are some difficulties with that, and it boils down to the bottom number there, which is it would cost $4 to $5 million. Reason is that long loop there on Put Off Street, as long as that is, it's already a 10% slope, and in order to do a pedestrian bridge to today's standards and receive any sort of grant money, even if we built it ourselves, we'd have to meet current ADA standards, and that would be a 5% to 8% slope, which gets into an extremely long bridge down Put Off Street or landings and switchbacks, which would look something like this. Certainly, that's an ugly example, but a newer version of what you see there on the right. And on the left would be an aerial view of what those switchbacks would look like in order to meet that slope requirement. There'd be two on the west side and four on the east side.
Alan?
Yes?
Would you mind going back to that picture just a minute again? So, would we have to acquire land to be able to make that zigzag and?
I don't think so. It's possible. Until we got a design, we wouldn't know, but it looks like most of that would fit within the existing road rights of way. I would not envision having to acquire any houses, but it would look something like this. There's various ways of going about it, but what, what's going on here, if to meet ADA, you have to basically have a flat area every 30 feet on the ramp. And so, that's what you see on each of those switchbacks is that flat area. And just to snake that in there without running down the middle of, of Put Off Street to the next intersection, you know, to make it compact, that's kind of what it would look like.
So, Alan, excuse me, just for clarity, it's about a 30-foot run where we see the grade to then to the flat level and then another 30-foot run so we could have, give or take, 150, 180 feet of switchback based on the count that's in the example?
Yeah. Actually, these are, are more than 30 feet, so you'd have a level landing, and I switched it back, basically keeping it within the available right of way that there was. So, you'd have multiple landings on each one of those switchbacks. I think they're more in the order of 70 feet, so you probably have one or two landings.
That's where I was going to get it to scale so you could get an idea of what, how many climbs it would take to get ultimately across the tracks and then back down again.
Yeah, and that's a good question. What, what the issue is, as you get to the east of the railroad, the topography falls off, so you're chasing that grade down the hill so that, you know, the hill's falling almost as fast as you're needing to go to meet the ADA requirements. So, that's the reason for, for so many switchbacks and for the cost. As we have it right now, this is what's in the current plans and what's in the application to ODOT, and we could move forward with this if we received the grant and then still come back and pursue some sort of funding for that bridge. Now, I'm not optimistic on being able to receive it because they look at cost benefit. The cost's extremely high. The, the usage of this, of G Street when it was last open was 750 cars a day. We don't have a pedestrian count, but it's, it's not an extremely high use and it's a very high cost. Put it in perspective, it's about five times at least what the bridge is like over Two Mile Creek was for the belt line. It's more than, I believe, that entire project was, so that's, that's kind of where it is on a cost basis. And this was looked at back in 2010. The consultant at the time, I didn't know it, but I was going back through the files, I found it and put inflation dollars in, and it came in to the same cost that we're anticipating today. And I kind of bounced all of this off of ODOT's bridge, one of their bridge experts, just to get a second opinion on, you know, what could and couldn't be done in the way of rehab and what would and wouldn't be required if we pursue a pedestrian bridge at this location. So, this is just a recap from last time. In the caucus report, I said $1 million. When we did the detailed cost estimate, we ended up at like $875,000. Again, if we receive that, 95% of it would be paid for through the grant. The ODOT right now is paying for the design. We do have a design, but in order to satisfy the grant, it's got to be a design that's to ODOT's standards, and so it would have to be updated, and they would presumably pay for that as it stands now. And Edwin and I are continuing to have discussions with CSX. We hope to be here in front of you and say, well, they've committed to the financial match. They're not there yet. They're still keeping the, the door open, but we haven't got that firm commitment that they would satisfy the local match to the federal grant if we receive it. There was also a question on clearances and what does removal of this bridge mean in terms of clearances? And when Joshua mentioned that, a contingent came up from Jacksonville, and we had the whole discussion about removing G Street. They want us to remove D Street, both of which are restrictions. At that time, there were three restrictions in Hamilton, one being the train depot. If you remember, they cut a notch out of the corner of the roof of the train depot in order to remove that one. The other two were G Street and D Street, and since that time, they have lowered and got to the clearance that they had requested to get to back in 2017, which is 21-foot of clearance. Both of those, they have lowered the tracks and obtained that clearance. Now, this is not a full clearance, as Edwin said at the last meeting, for auto racks and not even the largest double deckers, but this was what they were telling us they ultimately wanted. I guess the bulk of their flow falls under this 21-foot threshold, so they're, they're already at least in, within Hamilton essentially clear. Now, the line itself, this is a map that I got from CSX's website. The line itself still prohibits double stacks and the auto racks, but not because of something here in Hamilton necessarily. You can see there's different categories of track that are based on how much they can clear under it, and right now, they're both prohibited through that section. That's probably why we haven't seen any utilizing it, even though the local restrictions have been removed. It's a lot to digest. I can scroll back to any slides or answer any questions that you have.
Well, I, I hope that there truly is CSX participation. It's real money, but it's also symbolic in a lot of ways. I had been over to that G Street viaduct. Last time I stood there was when I was on safety patrol in elementary school. [laughing]. But I had a chance to really take a look at it from both sides, and yeah, it is a, it's a neat structure. It really is. When I got down to that Put Off side where that slope is, that is an incredible slope. I, I forgot how, how much of a slope that really is, but I understand ADA and, and, but I guess the back and forth looked like that Fair Avenue, that back and forth as you look up the hill to Princeton Road.
Yeah, that's a good example.
That type of look, is that, is that right?
That's exactly, and if we, if we had enough room to do an earthen embankment, that'd be the cheaper option. That's what it would look like. So, it'd basically look just like that, but probably in steel.
Steel, right, right. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Alan, Edwin, thank you. Definitely cleared up a lot of confusion with this. This has been a lot of very fluid situation, but I, I know it's just a matter of time before the railroad brings additional traffic through town, and obviously, we, we don't want that to happen. That's just not good for all the traffic issues that we have now. So, as we begin our talks with CSX, and I really hope that they work with us, that's a relationship I, that, that has to continue moving forward with them. They have to start working with us. Are we on the other end looking at other areas of town where we can put additional underpasses just in case the day comes where we potentially are getting 10 more trains a day on this line? Are we looking ahead with them to highlight, I don't know, maybe Millville Avenue or Martin Luther King right here to potentially do some traffic studies to see if we can put additional underpasses in?
Those would be the two most likely candidates, and we looked at them at a very high level back in 2017 when we were having all that discussion.
Okay.
And posed that to them as, you know, if they were able to meet our requests, say, for, you know, building two additional overpasses, then there would be some willingness here to completely remove G Street and D Street because D Street is fairly heavily used. I mean, that would, that would definitely impact our traffic if that bridge were to be removed.
Okay.
And, and that, that's ongoing. We're constantly having discussions about, you know, how do we make the traffic better and how do we look towards the future? Where's our next big project? Right now, our, our big underpass is, most urgent one, we'll say, is Northhamer Crossing, but.
Right, right.
Alan, thank you for exploring the other areas that are nearby that also have restrictions. When we read, as you said, there's quite a busy map, if you will, with the color codes and things like that, but it also shows that there is less likelihood of any immediate heavier traffic because of those restrictions that are in place nearby, whether it's 10 miles west or 10 miles east, is the way the trains travel and things. They might not be able to implement those higher level cars and, and wider cars and things like that because of those other areas that are nearby.
Yeah, that's our understanding. Back then, as I understood, it's maybe over in Indiana is where the restriction is.
Alan?
I'm sorry? I jumped in. I know you'll send a presentation over. Can you send a link also of where you got the maps?
Yes. I'll have to find it again, but I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay, if you would. I mean, if not, or just kind of direct us a little.
Yeah, it's literally, I mean, it's available to the public. It's, you got to dig into CSX website, and so I'll send that to you.
Appreciate it. No, I'll dig, but.
No, I've got it.
Thank you, sir.
Alan, has this been a priority or is this like in a to-do list to take the G Street overpass down? It hasn't come up since I've been on council in three years. I just wondered why now?
So, really, the, the opportunity for the funding came up now, and that's what brought it back up. It came up in my time here in 2016, and that's in, and then we had the meetings with CSX to talk about the how in 17. The, the removal and replacement of it's been, you know, on the horizon for 20 years.
Yeah.
It closed, I want to say in 2008. So, it, once that point hit, then it was like, okay, what next? Replace it or get rid of it.
Okay. Thank you. I thought that. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good presentations.
Thank you.
Let's go to audience of citizens. Individuals wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak when that item is on the council floor or a vote. All individuals who intend to address council are required to sign this blue public speaking book, which is in, was at back of the chambers. Each speaker's allowed up to five minutes. We have Dan Hancock first. Please go to the podium, everyone, and state your name and your address, please, and then continue with your comments.
My name's Dan Hancock and I live in Hamilton, Ohio. I like the idea that Rich is going to finally put the sidewalks down Eden Park there because it's badly needed because of the senior living that's behind there. The people walk along there with their dogs and everything, and they have to get out in the street there and that. But the other thing is if you're going down from Stall Haver down to where the Goodwill store is, all the sidewalks along there is, you got a section there of sidewalk, then you have a big section, no sidewalk, and then back and forth, back and forth. And a lot of people that shop at Kroger's and Meyer's have to take their wheelchair and go out on the street and that because the sidewalks are not complete along Main Street. So, we need to complete that section. I brought that up last year, and they were going to try to put it on this year's budget to complete the sidewalks along Main Street because it's badly needed for the safety of seniors and people in wheelchairs. The other thing is when you come down Gordon Avenue to B Street, you took the traffic lights down there, and you got a convenience store on a corner while somebody coming down there can't see the traffic coming down B Street over Two Mile Creek there. There's a levee there, and so they have to pull up and that and try to look around the store there to see what's coming. It'd be nice if across the street from Gordon there on B Street, you put one of those big reflective mirrors so people can look up in the mirror and see the traffic coming down so they know that they can safely pull out or what's the traffic is in. So, you put a big reflective mirror there and that'd be nice. reflective mirrors so people can look up in the mirror and see the traffic coming down so they know that they can safely pull out or what the traffic is in. So you put a big reflective mirror there, and that'd be nice for safety of everybody. And the other thing is, in Prospect Hill, there are a lot of signs there, of course, no left turns and that, and they need sadly to be replaced because the signs, you can't even hardly read them. You can just barely read where it says no on it with a red line through it, but you can't visually understand what the sign's supposed to be. And there's a bunch of them, like I said, in Prospect Hill there. And also, the city was in the process of new negotiation with the Board of Education to try to take over the park back there at the end of Mark Avenue. Be nice because like, there's two ladies that walk down my street, and they have five dogs that are on a leash there that they're walking their dogs. And then there's a bunch of other people that walk two dogs and that. On my street alone, there's over 100 dogs. So it'd be nice if you had the park there so you could make a dog park there and let the people run their dogs and that, and they could sit down on a bench and that. And also, the Hamilton Running Club would like to have a running track around there, but there's a couple of people that were opposed to that. But, you know, it's progress. There's an exit going off of Mark Avenue. There's also an exit going off of Cleveland Avenue to it. There's also an exit going off of Northwest Fullington Boulevard for that park. So it would be three ways to go in and out of it. So, and like I said, it would be really nice to have a dog park here. So I thank you for your time. And also, I'd like to ask City Council for the people that live in Washington 17 Strong to come to the meeting tomorrow night because we're having a big meeting for the 17 Strong Washington District there. So I invite everybody to show up if they can.
Thank you, Dan.
Chris Cannell, 1309 Cleveland Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Scormesi. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight. The School Board of Education has asked if I would give quarterly updates on the happenings at Hamilton City Schools. So I will be brief, but tonight I'll update you on the arts and athletics. Each week, a fine arts newsletter is sent out to the building principals, administrators, and staff to keep them updated on any new initiatives. Two faculty members started a music honor society, the TRIAM, which is similar to the National Honor Society. TRIAM is endorsed by the National Association for Music Education. Our choir department has added a new after-school a cappella group called E-Harmonix. The marching band received their first-ever unanimous superior rating at the Ohio Music Education Association State Championship. Six of our art department students submitted artwork in which they were named state art scholastic winners for 2023. Our fine arts supervisor applied on behalf of the Hamilton City Schools to receive the honor of one of the best communities for music education, and we are waiting till to find out those results in April. On the athletic side, congratulations to the seventh-grade Hamilton Boys Basketball Team. They are the GMC Champions for 2023 and finished the season with a perfect record of 20-0. We had district qualifiers in swimming for the Boys 200 Freestyle Relay, Girls 200 Medley Relay, the Girls 400 Freestyle Relay, and Hazel Culver qualified in the 100 Rest Stroke and the 200 Individual Medley. Danielle Brunner, who's a freshman, qualified for the districts as an individual in girls' bowling, and the boys' team qualified for the districts. Our academic quiz team coach, Matt Nicole, was named GMC Coach of the Year. Cooper Matthews scored 39 points in a basketball game versus Princeton to set a new school record for the most points scored in the new Hamilton Athletic Center. He was only three points shy of the overall record, including the old gym, the record that was set by Norm Greavy in the class of 1985.
Wow.
And finally, this year, Hamilton High School has recognized 120 varsity athletes for GMC All-League Academic Awards over a 3.3 GPA. That is my update.
It's a great report, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris Adon?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Could council be included in those emails that are sent out?
Sure. Okay with me?
I'd like to receive them.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. I don't see any parking in order at Kroger's on Nury Avenue. People were there during the daytime, parking handicapped places. You can see a handicapped, they run, run to the store, you know. They should enforce that parking for handicapped people there. Pretty bad to be, I mean, people, you see people who are handicapped, handicapped leaning their window. They go, oh, damn, they get mad, right? You can't park here, you know?
We need to enforce that, and maybe you want to talk to folks at Kroger's, they might be able to be involved with something.
I think so, because Kroger's a pretty good place, you know.
Okay. Great. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Jim.
Thank you. How we got on?
You, too. Yes, there's four Brody Bakers. Each one of you guys give your name and your address, please.
I'm Brody Baker, 10 Justin Place.
Are they going to be talking to?
No, they're just saying.
Okay.
I'm here on behalf of me and my friends. They're just some of them, mainly focusing on the Wilson Pool area. It is a very densely populated area of teens, but there's limited activities for them. There are 3,500 teens in the Hamilton City School District. 13 to 1,800 of them are teens that are within walking distance of Wilson Pool. A sign of a wealthy neighborhood is an active neighborhood, and there's no way for it to be an active neighborhood. I would like to add basketball courts as a start. Hamilton is hurting for teen activities in that area, and I think basketball courts is a good start for that. One idea for that would be lights so people could play when it gets darker, especially around this time. It's nice outside, but dark. There's activities like splash pads and swing sets for the younger kids, but nothing for anybody our age. Another thing is, the parks that are on, in Hamilton, aren't available to most kids without transportation, and that area is a good area. That's it.
I was going to say, I really appreciate, and I think we all do on council, the statistics that you have brought up, especially the walking distance to the park there. We've got a group called 17 Strong, and they do have some grant capabilities, but I'd like to hear what you just presented. Councilmember Vaughn, who, when do you think, would that area have a meeting of sorts there?
It's Washington.
It's probably Washington, but which?
Washington, yeah.
There's a meeting tomorrow night, I guess? Dan?
Well, there isn't, tomorrow night is a tour of Spooky Knook for the Washington neighborhood, so that is not a neighborhood meeting. But I do know who to get in contact with, and we'll ask Peggy Bangy to please get in touch. If you could give, excuse me, give us your email address or phone number, and I'm going to put you in touch with 17 Strong.
Okay.
And that would be a great start. I think the next would be our parks and talking to Adam Cornet, the director of our parks, and explaining what you're desiring, which was excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Brody, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but every time, we're painfully aware that there needs to be things for teenagers. Been a long time since I've been a teenager, so I have no idea what teenagers would want to do. So could you maybe come up with some ideas other than basketball? I mean, what are we missing that we could provide somehow in Hamilton? I mean, we used to roller skate, that kind of stuff. All that's gone. So give us an idea.
Brody, if you wish, you can confer with your friends. They all look like they have some input, but if there are things that we could list, as Susan and Carla shared, there are people in the Parks Conservancy, people, I've spoken with people on the school board about availability of land at Wilson because the junior high school and John Grim Park, as it's called, butt up to each other. So again, there might be some potentials, but see what your buddies have to say and tell us a little bit. As long as you're here, please share.
Yeah, I mean, basketball is something we've all been kind of playing lately just as a hobby. None of us actually play. But we've been having to travel to Powerhouse, and that's just more of a drive than some people like to do, and it's far-walking. One of them just said, one of them came up that we, there's really nothing to do. If we're bored one night, we'll go sit in the parking lot and just hang out, talk, throw a football. And we've got kicked out of every parking lot just for it being, just for it being private property. And that's, there's nothing you can really do about that, no spot for a bigger group of people to be with. So, I mean, even if it was just something where we could be at that parking lot, where there's benches to sit, an area to throw a football, anything.
You know, I love the idea, I mean, for veterans' projects, we want them to be veteran-led. For like teen projects, what teens can do in this city, I think some of the leadership, some of the ideas have to come from teens. And you four guys with your friends can come up with something that you could submit to 17 Strong, go to a 17 Strong meeting, and get the ball rolling, not just for you four guys, but for those who follow you. So that's what you're doing right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Brody Baker is an amazing young man. He probably doesn't get recognized for many things that he's really good at. He is an entrepreneur. He started two businesses, lawnmower repair. He's also lawn care. Brody Baker is an amazing person, going to be a great leader in our town. Man, I'm excited about this. Your father and I grew up together. We had many great memories that were spent at Lincoln Park, Wilson Pool, and I'm excited that you are following up on this. I'm excited that you've become the young man that you were, that you are, from where you were. You were an honorary little kid. But you are, you are the type of citizen that we want to continue to stay here. And the relationships that I built when I was a young man your age created an atmosphere in this town, and that's exactly what you're doing. And I believe that your idea of creating a healthy, your idea of a healthy neighborhood is exactly what we had when I was a kid, and I believe it's that sense of pride that Hamilton has. And I just want to thank all four of you for coming here and presenting this and being active. I think that you should get with Mr. Nab. Maybe you could stop by and see Brody and his friends. He's gonna, he's starting to head up the 17 Strong youth group at the high school.
We are, and that's where I was going to go. I saw Daniel gave, Mr. Chidman gave you his business card. I've got a meeting with, through Mr. Zari, with students at your school, at the high school, next Thursday at lunchtime, so kind of get the initiative going. Daniel, if you'll share my business card as well with this, with Brody, and we'll get some things going, okay?
All right.
Great. Thanks for coming and visiting.
Mr. Mayor.
We have the other gentleman introduce themselves, just to recognize them.
Blake Maata, 430 Dexter Court.
Aiden Stitzinger, 3288 Fear Not Mails Road.
Ganon Romer, 742 Miami Way Drive.
Thank you for coming, all of you.
You guys are already leaders because you came to council, went to the podium, and said, hey, we can do better, we can have some things for teens. So, Councilmember Pullman?
A second. You know, we're talking about the Hamilton Parks Conservancy. It's, wouldn't be, couldn't we just arrange a meeting for these guys to come in and talk with Adam and at the office over there? I think it would be a great thing for Adam to see. And they may be able to figure out somehow in the budget or try to find something for it. I think you get it from these guys directly to Adam, I think, rather than through a letter. I think it would be a neat thing.
I'd say meeting at the park makes sense.
Meeting at the.
Go right to the park and say, hey, what do you see? What can you see?
Basically, something to get them in front of Adam. And I think Adam's a great guy, and I think he sees your guys' passion on this. Maybe he'll push a little bit harder to get something over there.
Brody, get the, get your contact information and your friends' contact information, get that back to Daniel. That'll float to council, all of us on council. And if you please, make sure that Adam Cornet gets it and give him a summary of what was discussed here tonight, because, you know, this, this is what changes, changes our city to the better when you've got young people with ideas of how we can make the city better for our youth.
If you get a meeting, I'll be there right with you, so I think that's a great idea. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, that takes care of our audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes a number of things, but includes all staff reports as well as all caucus reports. We're going to go to the committee of the whole, and that allows council to ask questions about certain agenda items, comment on the reports, announce up the motion that the regular meeting be recessed. The committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second, Councilmember Pullman, Senate Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oath, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And then it's 6:45. We go to the committee of the whole, and we go to the caucus agenda. Mr. City Clerk, you going to lead us through this?
Absolutely. So for our first item on the caucus agenda, we'll have a presentation by our Director
Good evening, Mayor. Council, citizens of Hamilton. This is a request for council to consider the resolution for passing the assessment role for the 2023 street resurfacing project. The streets include Car Dome Drive, Meadowwood Way, Ridgefield Road, the entire subdivision out off of Columbia Road, Front Street between the railroad and Pershing Avenue. If you recall, we did Front Street north of the railroad up to High Street a couple years ago. New London Road from Hogan Drive to Ross Hanover Road. This is prior to when the improvements on New London Road in front of Baden High School will be done, so we'll get this done ahead of that. Northwest Washington between Eaton Avenue and Cleveland Avenue. And lastly, Bender Avenue from Mosley, I'm sorry, Mosler to Parkamo and Con Avenue between Bender and Hensley. Are there any questions?
Please.
Rich, when can we expect the first road to be resurfaced in spring? Do you have any set date of when the first crew is going to be showing up and getting everything started?
Well, we still have the streets out on the west side, Andrea Drive and those areas, Barbara, I think it is. We haven't heard from our contractor yet on the paving schedule.
Okay.
But we certainly want to get them in as early as possible and get started on that.
Okay. Could you let us know when that, when you hear a firm date?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll check on it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
So next up for caucus agenda items two, three, four, and seven, we'll have a presentation by our Finance Director, Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. So following Rich is a good thing. His, for more than one reason, but his caucus report, that resolution to the Cessy is the start of the public improvement projects. What I'm doing with the next three agenda items is the end of the program, and we have to request authorization to bill, and any unpaid bills then have to be assessed to real estate taxes. Excuse me. So this is for the 2020 Concrete Repair Program, the 2021 Concrete Repair Program, and the Corwin. and the Corwin Avenue Concrete Repair Program. We'll be sending bills out in May of 2023. Citizens have until September 1st to pay those bills. Any bills unpaid at that time will be assessed to the real estate taxes. It's over a 10-year period, and with rates right now, I'm estimating at about a 5% interest rate. And that, this slide covers all three caucus items, and you will see three separate ordinances on that.
Question, that 5% interest rate, how is that compounded in some way or over years?
Yes, compounded annually.
They don't have to let you know that they just, if they don't pay it, then it just automatically goes on their taxes, correct?
Correct. They, if they don't want to pay it, they want it to go on the taxes. They don't have to do anything. The assessment is on the property, not on the property owner. Any other questions on that? So my next report is just a verbal report. It's on the caucus agenda for the payroll administrator. And what we're simply doing is reclassifying one of our current employees, for that employee to be able to participate in classified collective bargaining agreement negotiations. We're not adding new, any new employees, and we expect to be able to cover current salary and benefits with our current budget. Any questions on that one? Thank you.
And then moving on to agenda item number five, we will have a presentation by Ms. Tamika Hedrington.
Good evening, everyone. So I am presenting as, hopefully.
Flip it over.
Maybe. There we go. On the request to update the annual action plan for fiscal year 2324. The annual action plan is the city's requirement in order to continue using community development block grant and home investment partnership program funds, both of which are allocated through HUD. It is anticipated that we'll submit the plan later this spring, preferably at the end of April. In order to conduct the annual action plan and update the information and data, we gather public input and use that input to take and actually include our decision-making, include it in our decision-making process for the annual action plan. So we conducted web surveys, did three public outreach meetings, and also did a public hearing at Planning Commission on February 16th. Here's a copy of the survey that we posted online and also made available to the public in paper copy. In order to utilize CDBG funds, the projects must meet a national objective. So in other words, they have to benefit low and moderate income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of stolen blight, and also meet an urgent need. There are seven categories for eligible activities under CDBG, and those include purchase of property, public facilities, demolition and clearance, public services, emergency home repairs, economic development, and planning, design, and program administration. We actually just got final allocations last week from HUD, and our final allocation for CDBG was $1,307,464. We will be pairing that along with revolving loan funds and commercial revolving loan funds, and also program income for a total of $1,396,128.35. I don't think we have the home allocation amount on there, but that was actually slightly increased, and the final total for that from HUD was $393,677. And again, that's for home funds. Here you will see a list of the proposed activities under CDBG. We include clearance and demolition, housing projects, specifically the minor home repair program. We have a number of public facilities and improvements, as well as committing funds to economic development and public services. Just to name a couple of the public services, they'll include services to BTW programming, parachuting, parachute for their child advocate program, the YWCA, the Victims Advocacy Program, and Fit and Center. Under home, we plan to continue the down payment and closing cost assistance program, along with commit funds to neighborhood housing services, acquisition and rehab project. There's also, you'll see administrative costs that'll be going to our local Chota, which is neighborhood housing services. And then we'll also be using match funds to provide assistance to NHS and self. I know that was a lot, but any questions so far?
Any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'll be giving a presentation on agenda item number six. So Daniel Tideman, City Clerk, I'll give a short presentation about caucus agenda item number six, which is pretty much a liquor permit transfer from one permit owner to another permit owner for Ohm Oil, which is a gas station convenience store located at 1155 South Erie Boulevard. The permits in particular are C1 and C2 liquor permits, which deal with retail sales of prepackaged beer and wine to be consumed off premises. So it's not like they're opening a bar or anything. It's just beer and wine to be sold in takeout for the most part. As a reminder for this, this Ohio Revised Code allows us, as legislative authority, to have the opportunity to object to these permit applications. So our building, fire, and health departments have all reviewed this application. They don't have any objections. So the recommendation found in your caucus report is merely that you don't object to it, and we'll just continue on with the process with the state of Ohio. Do we have any questions about this application?
Questions? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. And then lastly, for agenda item number eight, we'll have a presentation by our Planning Director, Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. This tonight is a project coming to you from Planning Commission. It is a proposed expansion of Vinyl Max out in Hamilton Enterprise Park. And because that's zoned plant, industrial plant development, expansions need to go through the planning process. And they are also asking for two variances. You can see the expansion is in the dark color, and they're adding, proposing to add parking and new curb cuts as well. And the two variances, simply put, are to allow them to continue the design that already exists on the building, both material-wise and also the dock doors. We have changed our industrial design standards since they first built, so they're just asking for relief so that they can have continuity in their design and also functionality. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Biden expansion at Vinyl Max, and the Planning Commission did spend a lot of time reviewing things and led by Dale McAllister, so. All right, I'll accept the motion. That the Committee of the Whole be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Committee of the Whole is closed at 7 o'clock. I'll accept the motion. It's a regular meeting. Be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, that's 7:01 that we reconvene the regular meeting. Now I'll accept the motion. Keep moving.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion, though, with the exception of the items so noted. Council receive the reports and the consent agenda and concur with the recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items and accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
We, Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Go to pending legislation, agenda item number nine, second reading of emergency ordinance involving 10 Millville Avenue.
An emergency ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, CIC, 10 Millville Avenue, second reading.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Ryan?
Move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Same.
Ordinance adopted, 6 to 0 with one abstention.
Go to agenda item number 10, second reading of emergency ordinance involving property located at 319 North Erie Boulevard.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and purchase agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 319 North Erie Boulevard, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, parcel number P6431036000054. Save Hamilton purchaser, Anthony Hicks, seller, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion or comments on this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Good to agenda item number 11. It's a second reading of emergency ordinance involving two permanent utility easements and two temporary easements.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of two permanent utility easements and two temporary easements located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio, 2941 Townesville Road and 2949 Townesville Road. Judy A. Brewer, property owner, city of Hamilton, Ohio purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to new legislation, first reading of emergency ordinance, number 12, involving temporary easements.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase of a temporary easement located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio, 3150 Townesville Road. Mark R. and Christie M. Schlabach, property owner, city of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 13, two readings of an ordinance involving compensation and classification plan.
An ordinance amending Schedule D2 of the city's compensation classification plan of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in ordinance number OR 2019-12-130, adopted December 4, 2019, as amended from time to time by deleting certain classifications and ranges and increasing the remaining ranges by 3%, and repealing the existing Schedule D2 as set forth in said ordinance, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance amending Schedule D2 of the city's compensation and classification plan of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in ordinance number OR 2019-12-130, adopted December 4, 2019, as amended from time to time by deleting certain classifications and ranges and increasing the remaining ranges by 3%, and repealing the existing Schedule D2 as set forth in said ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Good to agenda item number 14, first reading of an ordinance involving vacating a portion of South 7th Street.
An ordinance vacating a portion, a portion of a portion of South 7th Street located between Walnut Street and Hanover Street, 4th Ward, city of Hamilton, Ohio, city of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of St. Clair Avenue.
An ordinance vacating a portion of St. Clair Avenue located between Bedford Avenue and River Road, 6th Ward, city of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, city of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 16, two readings of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Hamilton, Ohio during fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Hamilton, Ohio during fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any comments about this? Dave, I just want to make sure I got this right. Within this supplemental appropriation, there are a lot of things, but one's got to do with the river's edge roof. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, they're all important, but another one is also Linden Wall, baseball, working on the park there, their ball fields.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Good to agenda item number 17, it's a resolution involving signage on the Great Miami River Recreational Trail.
A resolution proposing that the city of Hamilton, Ohio cooperate with the Ohio Department of Transportation relative to the installation of U.S. Bike Route 25 signage on the Great Miami River Recreational Trail within the city of Hamilton Corporation limit, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Hamilton, Ohio, and the Ohio Department of Transportation for said signage.
Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. Good to agenda item number 18, it's a resolution involving a grant application with OKI Regional Council of Governments involving carbon reduction pilot program.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments, OKI, Carbon Reduction Pilot Program for Electric Vehicle Charging Grant, and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Good to agenda item number 19, it's a resolution involving an application for a grant for recruiting, retention, safe neighborhoods, public safety issues.
A resolution ratifying the application for and acceptance of a grant and execution of all related agreements for the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services Program for recruitment, for recruiting, retention, and safe neighborhoods, RRSN, and ratifying the distribution and use of said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Pullman. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer? Lauer?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number twenty, it's a resolution involving the uh, electric, electric vehicle charging station lease involving the Community Foundation and the Fit and Center.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver an electric vehicle charging station host lease agreement with the Hamilton Community Foundation for the installation of electric vehicle charging station at the Fit and Center for the Creative Arts.
I believe this is what executive director Edwin Porter was talking about earlier during his special presentation. Any questions or comments or discussion about this particular resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, really, really happy to learn that we're expanding the program, Edwin, uh, not only what you had shared for the opportunity to Fit and Center, but then going back through OKI, ODOT, what have you, for higher, if you will, higher velocity charging stations and things, so, thanks for networking, and as the mayor shared, this is really, really important to our community, thanks.
Any other comments or questions amongst council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We now go to audience of city manager?
Okay, sir.
Okay, audience of city council.
Um, I'd like to wish, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, please go right ahead.
I'd like to wish Zach Yordi, um, student at Baden High School, um, best of luck in the state championship wrestling this weekend. Um, I think he finished fourth, and he's gonna wrestle the number one seed in the state of Ohio, and I wish him the best of luck, um, coming out of the, coming out of that four seed, I wish him the best.
What weight class is he? No?
He should be two hundred, but he's about one seventy-one now, I think.
Yeah, that, losing that weight to wrestle on the wrestling day, that's, that's pretty wild stuff, but uh, anybody else? A couple things, uh, German Village is gonna be celebrating its fiftieth anniversary in October of this year, there's gonna be special events, and they're being planned now, but a lady who supported and participated in those original discussions fifty years ago, passed away last week, her name is Annette Harris, but what's also sad is her brother passed away this week, gentleman named Jim Baxter. Jim Baxter used to uh, sit on Hamilton City Council a number of years ago, um, great guy,